So.
So who calls it?
Oh.
Of course, gonna be.
Yeah, we lost for us.
Ryan or Ron?
Yeah.
Go ahead. Lead a ways.
Call the. Planning Commission meeting on. March twelfth, twenty twenty five, the order. We'll roll the call. We'll call any just the commission or. But.
I guess right, just doing a quick. Round table, maybe some.
Does everybody say their name?
Yeah.
Brian, you're here.
Hey, I'm Sue.
Brian, promise.
Andrew Keating.
Frank Sylvia.
Justin Petersley, staff.
Tracy Nix.
Both of them.
Kevin Bush.
Jackie Burks.
That's so.
We're all here.
Okay. Next thing is time for visitors or any visitors.
We have visitors online. If anyone wants to speak, please raise your hand. Go ahead, John.
Hi there. Can you hear me? Hello, can you hear me?
A little bit. It's quiet. But we can hear you.
Okay, this is John, this is John Robinson.
Lot better.
There you go. Okay. Well, listen, I wanted to comment on one thing. And there might have been a public hearing and maybe I missed it, but. I just wanted to weigh in on chapter four, chapter seventeen point forty two, which is this. Commercial residential overlay. And this happens to be in an area where I built the four plaques on a commercial property. And so many of you know. That both the projects that I've built there in Toledo, the four plaques and the triplex across from the police station. I've taken advantage of. The fact that with a conditional use, you can build multifamily on a commercial property. And so I, I think that's very valuable. To the city because it, it increases the density and allows more units to go in. And anyway, so you know, I really appreciate the work that the planning commission's done. I appreciate the work Justin's done. I just have some concern about this particular. Commercial residential overlay being the only one in the city that's like this. And I kind of understand that there's some properties there that are commercial, and then there's some. That have been residential in the past. What my fear is, is that. There's a few remaining vacant parcels in that overlay. And my fear is that with this change. Instead of being able to put some multifamily, a nice triplex or something on. That it's just going to have a single family house put on there. And, and I don't feel like that is the best benefit to the community. In other words, it's not the highest and best use. And what happens is these parcels are becoming. Scarcer and scarcer, and I don't have to tell you how hard it is to build in Toledo when it's on a mountainside and you can't find anything flat. And I've had to put retaining walls in everywhere I built, deal with stormwater issues and all kinds of stuff. So. To take some remaining properties and then just put single family on them, I, I'm kind of. I'm against that or I'm opposed to that because I don't think it's beneficial for the community. And I just wanted to, to weigh in on that because I think it's, we're not talking about a large area. And we're not talking about a large number of properties, but there are probably several in there that could have multifamily on them. And so anyway, that's it basically in a nutshell. I just wanted to weigh in on that. And I, again, I appreciate your time and I appreciate your efforts at trying to move housing forward. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
About questions? I'm sorry, where is this located and? What's the ask behind? What?
So in your packet, it's in the, it's in the second packet, it's age forty. It gives a map, shows you where it is.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
And I, I can cover, when I do my presentation, I'll cover this zone in a little bit more detail and then we could have probably some discussion on.
Okay.
What John, John had mentioned.
Thank you. Thanks a lot.
Is that it for the visitors?
Yeah.
So then now it's on to discussion and information items.
You jump again, Arlene, if you want to go to the slides. And yeah, well, I'll get into the, that overlay that's currently on the screen a little bit more as I go through the, the presentation and kind of where it's located. Why Planning Commission was discussing making that an overlay. And then kind of we can discuss John's comments and what changes would be not needed to do that or if it makes sense. Basically, it's a discussion here. We're not making a decision as a work session, but it's something we can touch on and discuss. That's up here in a second. On note, you know, as Arlene's getting the slides. Added, I know there's a dense, dense packet and the hope. The hope was kind of that we had the memo, which was the main focus, that first two pages within the packet of kind of some history of the code changes and then. All those other pages, I'll kind of do just a high level summary and go through it. So it makes a little bit more sense on kind of why each of, each of these code. Changes were proposed and the, the goal of this is so we can discuss any of these changes in more detail. And then there will, there will be some public hearings as the, the next process in this step. So that kind of get ahead of any questions, we can have those discussions. Here, here today. And just in that, in that memo, just to kind of summarize that, basically the, the second and third page of your packet. There's been kind of a multitude of housing code updates over the last, I guess, now six, six, seven years. And some of those have been initiated by state changes and some just by the city of Toledo wanting to create a more. Inclusive zoning ordinance to make it easier to build additional housing units. So kind of the, the first, the first one. You know, step back here, I wanted to just highlight some. Recent developments as well that have occurred. Within the, the city, kind of just the non, kind of traditional, single, single unit or manufactured. Units. So that just as an example, the, as many of you know, the eleven unit affordable housing complex that was recently. Completed those projects take a lot of time. I think the building permit. Originally submitted in twenty twenty one, but it took all the way till twenty twenty four to kind of realize that, that project. John Robinson, who commented, is actually currently in the process of building a triplex in the commercial. Own on A Street there, and then also completed a quadplex off of Beach Street in twenty twenty two. And then recently a duplex was completed this, this year. So kind of just. A summary of some additional types of housing, housing units that were recently built in the city. And this is in addition to manufactured housing and manufactured homes and single units detached as well. And then kind of the first update was accessory dwelling units that was done in twenty nineteen. So making it a little bit easier to basically. You can think of it in two ways, a backyard unit that's detached. Or they can also be attached units. You might see that somebody converts the complete bottom floor that might be a vacant. Underutilized basement as an example that that gets converted into a accessory dwelling unit. So that would be considered an attached ADU. It kind of would feel like a duplex, but it would fall under the, the ADU requirements. In twenty twenty one, there was a variety of different housing updates that were done. Like reducing size requirements, allowing cottage clusters. So think of like. A bunch of smaller units kind of clustered around like a common space, whether it's a grass area or a community type garden. So we haven't seen one built yet, but that is now something that's an option. Within RG zones and allowed outright use and then the RS zone. As a conditional use, Toledo only has two residential zones, our RS, and then. General residential, our RG, other cities go by R one, two, three, four. But that kind of had Toledo's code structure is just those two, two residential zones. In twenty twenty two, there was a housing capacity analysis that was completed. This, this was a, a project that was funded. Through Department of Land Conservation and Development funding, and we worked with Echo Northwest. To complete that, but basically what that did is it, and that, that not full documents available, but that looked at the current. Kind of growth and demographics of the city and then also looked at the land use and how much, how much available land there is. And then you remove things like steep slopes, which there are a lot of in Toledo, blood plain, wetlands, other. Kind of constraints to figure out how much land's actually available. I think one of the concerns with that analysis was it did show a really low growth rate for the city of Toledo, but that. Even just because that analysis shows a low growth rate doesn't prevent us from trying to make these housing code updates to build. No housing in, in the, in the city. And then a comprehensive plan update in twenty twenty three that included some housing, but also. Kind of a, not a full rewrite, but kind of a re, kind of working the comp plan that was adopted. Twenty twenty three. And then I'll kind of go through the current, current updates that we're working on right now. And I'll start on the, the slides, Arlene. Any initial questions on past, past updates?
I was just gonna, we are going by RS standard, the RS standing for standard, not single.
Yeah.
Okay, I just want, want, hope John knows that and what the ADUs and that sort of thing.
Don't think again.
Was there a benefit to us for just doing the two? The RS and RG? As opposed to the one, two, three, like, why did we choose to do that and not what other cities are doing?
Nets before me, Arlene, I don't know if you have history of the two zones versus the four zones.
I mean, would it behoove us to change? Like, I don't know, but I mean, would it help us or hurt us or, I mean, is it?
I can only speculate, maybe that was what was proposed in DLCD's original model code, maybe.
Do you know, Ann?
I think.
The R one through R four is more. More beneficial to folks with a lot of flat land. Because you can do it by the size of the lots, by how much amenities you want to have, so on and so forth. This was the original, all the way back into the seventies when DLCD first got started was the. G and then as cities developed, that's when R one, R four came in. Toledo looked around and said, we don't got any real large lots, so we'll just call those RG and everybody else will call RS, or single family unit.
So it serves us and we don't need to think about.
Well, it did serve us as long as we're willing to, you know. Do these. Tweets, right, that work within our code for what we've got. That's the, that's the idea.
Okay.
It was that way in October of two thousand fifteen, when I changed the word for the city and it was the first time I'd seen it. Growing up on that. In the flat lands, feeling, got these videos over there.
Not with us weirdos over here, yeah.
Yeah, no, yeah. RD, RS.
The hill dwellers.
Now on the hills that have eyes, this human matter.
Thank you.
Moving on.
And overall, I would say, and there's a. Having the RS and RD is, there's, I don't know if there's necessarily a need for that additional zone, because we have kind of. In the RS, it was originally called the residential single family, where the proposal is to change it to standard RS. So same, not. And we did that so not to change the name to, so people are familiar with the RS, so to keep that. Because it's often just referred to in short. And I think overall, it's like, that's typically going to be more your, your single unit or manufactured, but. At the same time, there's a lot of single unit manufactured also within our RG zone because it's allowed outright. As well, there's just more flexibility in terms of those multi-unit or cottage clusters as outright permitted. Uses versus going through an additional conditional use process, which requires planning commission.
Okay.
Approval to go through it. So I don't, I don't know if there would be a huge benefit of adding another residential zone and.
And we got rid of a lot of design standards that were kind of restrictive and there, there were a lot more design standards. In, in the RS than in the RG. So. Things, yeah, things, yeah. Which was good.
That slide. Can jump to the second slide once it starts, or does it not want to start?
Can we maybe turn, would it help to turn?
I tough. Yeah, that's.
At least be one of them.
I was just about to say, well, we need popcorn. It looks like somebody thought of that.
From the current.
Once we don't throw it at the screen.
That's only if the show gets bad. I don't know, those are snacks that. Were early around, rounded up, or somebody did.
Well, kind of as Arlene plays with it to make it, because I know you can't read it when, as well, and it's not the full screen. We're going to just get the slides full screen here. But you, you don't really need to see the first couple of slides. But a quick, quick outline. I'll just go over some background, which I've started to do a little bit. And then kind of I broke it out into kind of three sections, but general housing code updates. Hospital three, three, nine, five code updates and then partition and subdivision code updates. And then at the end. We'll just have a little discussion briefly on the parks, plan grant, a quick, quick update on that, that grant. And. Sorry, it's not, not working.
It's on my screen.
It just not translates.
On her screen, it is showing the slideshow and blowing up all.
Let's all go crowd.
I wonder if you can go in the Zoom app, deals icon up there in the right and. Up top.
Oh, you're probably sharing your window URL with Zoom as opposed to sharing your screen.
Yeah.
So the three dots on Arlene's screen in the center.
So it says Arlene Mina Kai's screen. Is that what you're talking about?
Yeah.
Very top.
The three dots there.
There you go.
It's the window.
I would do stop presenting or stop sharing and I would reshare. So down to the bottom, see where it says shared on the bottom.
See what's in share. Oh. It's a little green arrow. Yeah, it's a green arrow.
You go.
Learning.
Click on the big button, I don't know. You click on share now, which. I'm doing.
It works. It's so wonderful.
So he said it's, I shouldn't be sharing the window.
Yeah, the German.
Yeah. So this is. This is my present, anything? Be sharing the window.
Real.
Yeah.
It's right here.
Would you see it?
Yeah, it's such a service. Remember I listened to his meeting, three days ago.
So.
I just.
Just one name was the one listening to computers.
I don't know what he just goes.
It's imperial, carrying the entire. It was the other one, you were sharing.
You can go to the next, the next slide. Alright, so thank you all for, for being patient. So quick. And it, it won't take too long to get, get through all of these. These slides in terms of updates and then we'll have time for discussion. So quick. Quick background. On kind of this project, so this was funded by a Department of Land Conservation and Development grant for housing code updates. That's the, basically the state land use agency. So part of this is meeting legislative requirements and also supporting additional housing development with zoning code updates. And it aligns with those past housing code updates that I talked about that are outlined in the. The memo. So kind of the goal of kind of continuing that work and then continuing to meet legislative. Requirements on the, the right, that's just a table that we pulled from the housing capacity analysis. It does go up to twenty twenty two. But as you'll kind of see from. Really twenty eleven, which is at the second year that's listed here to twenty eighteen, we really would only see. Two to five units per year. There was a good jump in twenty nineteen to twenty twenty one. And then now we've kind of leveled off. A little closer to historic levels. I don't have the numbers for twenty three or twenty four here, but that's just to kind of show. The historic numbers of, of dwelling units in, in Toledo. And the next, on the next slide, I just wanted to pull just for context. And again, this report's posted on the website as well, but this is some key findings that came out of that housing capacity analysis. So some of this will probably seem relatively obvious in terms of living here, but Toledo has primarily single. Family housing or what we're now referred to as single unit. Detached housing, kind of mostly owner, owner occupied. And I touched on the building permit history there a little bit and often I have the note there about. Oftentimes what you see, especially with larger projects, that the building permit might come in in. Twenty twenty one, but it takes multiple years to, for those units to come alive. And get their occupancy permit, kind of matching some of Oregon's demographics, statistics, populations aging. And then the median, median sales price is increasing in Toledo, but. It's in terms of surrounding communities still lower. And these, I think it's from, a lot of this is from twenty twenty two, but I think most of this remains true, but we haven't pulled new, new statistics. And then so vacant and partially vacant land in Toledo. So that's, that's the analysis that's basically done. It's a basic, it's kind of like this mapping exercise to identify those vacant and partially vacant properties. And most of those have some level of constraint on a portion of those lots, where there is slopes of flood plain. And then, sorry that this text, that's a little smaller, but I'll, I'll read through. So general, kind of starting with the general housing code update. So there's a, a bunch of definition. Updates that were provided within the, the code. I'm not going to read verbatim all of these and a lot of these, the goal here was to. To match current state, state definitions with these. Code updates and also add in terms that weren't included. Apparently in our code. So one, one of the new definitions, so middle housing or missing middle housing. So. That's often referred to as anything from a duplex up to kind of like. Six plexes. So in between, kind of historically, you have a lot of those. Single unit houses or apartments in a community, but not as many duplexes or those kind of middle housing units. So that's, that's the term. That, that it's a, it's a newer term that's been created. So how. Our code already does, has some of that flexibility and we've seen a few duplexes and triplexes and quadplexes built. In the city. Over the last few years. And then now our housing, our dwelling unit definition is, will now also be inclusive of things like modular homes or prefabricated homes. So making it. Clear that are. As long as you're meeting building code essentially, that you can have different types of single unit, whether it's manufactured, stick built, it's. The modular where you're kind of, you're having pieces already pre-built. Brought to the site or prefabricated. And ultimately you're getting the same outcome of that you have a new unit on, on the lot. So just making it really clear in the code. That your median building code, then you can. Be considered a single unit, dwelling unit. And then. Other new, a few new definitions, so single room occupancy development and single room occupancy unit. They're connected definitions. So the purpose of that and that's met in alignment with the new state. Law is making it clear that within a, so you have a four bedroom house. That you can have these single rooms that are rented out with individual locks and then shared space. So a shared kitchen bathroom area. So that's making it clear that that's now allowed. And new defining it here and then I'll go kind of where, show where it's now would be allowed in the Toledo codes. So making that really clear. Often that's something that might already be occurring, that you rent out a room within this, as a roommate situation. And that's not really something that the city's. Regulating and it, and it would be really hard to keep track of anyway, in terms of. Who's renting out a room and everything. And that's kind of a side comment. Airbnb is different, a little different where you're renting out your house, you have to pay the transient lodging tax and. Shouldn't be registering with the business license with the, the city. There's only a couple that we know of in the city. And then a few kind of definitions being removed. So family and babysitting. So kind of what the reasoning for this is kind of, I think the best way to describe it is uncoupling the zoning code with trying to define what a family. Is. So historically. You, you'll have, and that's why we're going away from single family housing or calling the zone that. But trying to get away from that the zoning code is not regulating what a family is, because it could be roommates, could be. Husband and wife, or there's lots of different ways a family can look. So that's just making it really clear that just. I think that's the best way to describe it is that uncoupling and same with babysitting. Find in our zoning code, but I don't think it, they're not in our terms of our regulations that, it's a, a need to actually have that defined.
On that one.
It just is different than like the residential care facilities and homes or childcare facilities. Those are, those are still defined. Within, within our code. Other minor definition updates. And then I've already mentioned this, but updating the single family residential zone to standard residential zone. And then, yeah, that allowing those single room occupancies in both residential zones. And then one kind of additional minor update that's proposed is updating the sign standards in the RS and RG zones. To make it clear that we allow signage for multi-unit or subdivisions. It wasn't explicit in the old code, so they came out clear.
So one sort of question observation, something on the babysitting comment, just coming from early childhood. Systems work. One thing that jumps out to me there is babysitting. It's kind of an older term for what would now be called the informal childcare. So when you have zoning. Or you have code around the idea of what is a child's daycare unit or was being used for childcare in. Human services, Department of Human Services type language, family, friend and neighbor care is kind of the term now, which is saying it's. An aunt, it's a neighbor, it's, you know, the high school, you know, the sixteen year old, high school kid watching, or the seven year olds, whatever it is. But it's that informal care that's happening inside your house that isn't necessarily held to the same standards of a child. Circumstance. That isn't necessarily held to the same standards of a child, you know, uh, circumstance, so I'm just wondering if. Babysitting was sort of in the bolder term, sort of definition of inside their own home informal childcare that is. Typically considered license-exempt in childcare code.
Yeah, I, I would, I would agree with that with analysis, and I think with our. Um, code as a structure, there'd be, and proposed, there'd be nothing that would prevent someone from, uh. Remind me of the terms that.
The informal parent, our family, friend and neighbor care, or license exempt, and there's lots of films that are used for it, depending on kind of. The jurisdiction you're talking about, each thing is needed from.
Yeah, and, and I think that's a good, good point, and nothing, and nothing, I think in our code would prevent kind of that, that.
And that's what I was concerned about is that if we, if we remove languages like that somewhere, I wondered if there was somewhere that. Would prevent people from being able to do that, or.
You just have, so like somebody would come over to their house, like say I had a two-year-old, some kid would watch the two.
If your parents.
That's totally fine, but if I have my friend, my other friend, my other friend bring their two-year-old and have a babysitter.
That's usually fine, too.
Or if it's at the babysitter's house, and there's like six people bringing.
Does, the state usually sets a limit of how many children, uh, constitutes a childcare, um, circumstance, and it could still be in someone's home. But that's where it gets called a family childcare home, it's definitely what the term is, but, um, usually it's. I want to say ranging from state or county to state or county between. Five and eight is usually where that threshold is crossed.
Both you have, we said five and four kids.
Including your own, so if you, Jonathan, are providing childcare to your kid and four neighborhood kids, that's fine, but once you get that six, then you have to get licensed.
I wrote a law for a lot of years.
Well, and it probably depends on frequency too, if you just do it once in a while, it's not.
There's, yeah, there's a lot more.
You have six kids of your own, you can't babysit.
That's fine.
You were not allowed babysitting.
You can't even have the six kids in the house at the same time. Uh, it's about taking care of other kids, but in the count, if you want to take care of someone else's kids, your kids.
Is this really a?
Yeah, it gets into like safe childcare.
Care centers and whether or not you have, if how many kids there are and whether or not you need a second person.
It's about how much space is there and things like that, too.
Yeah, but it's also safety concern, like you can't.
Yeah, and, and it also helps the state to resource those childcare providers, even the informal ones, it's like my mom is an informal childcare provider now in retirement. But because she's registered even without needing any, a license, um, she's able to get resources from. Education, from Department of Human Services, meals, things like that, yeah.
Yeah, because you'll hear people like whisper under their breath. Illegal childcare facility, you know, like, because.
That could be like a Gestapo.
Anyway, thank you for entertaining me.
No, and, and I think that's a, a good point, for, uh, really outside this scope of this, but something in the future our code. Probably should be updated in terms of our childcare facility definitions to match the current state definitions, because there has been. Similar to housing, I think there's been a lot of changes and it. Uh, my area of expertise, but they've also restructured how that department looks at the state level as well, so I think. Um, that's a, a future conversation of how we can make our, our code kind of match, um. The current state definitions.
In communities like ours, particularly the kind of income levels of our community, um. It's typically as many as half of children are taken care of in those informal type of settings, and so I think it's really important. It's like exactly, to make sure that they're not creating code that makes what they're doing illegal when it's. Really just like your grand, the grandmother taking care of the children, right?
And that is, that's definitely something we, we want to stay, stay out of with.
I appreciate it.
On each side.
Thank you.
And just kind of go into the, the next slide, yeah.
So you had, uh, can you back up, Barley? Please. Single room. You already talked about that, about the. Like basically. Back in the day, those things, called quads. There was a shared living room, um, and a shared providing. Bathroom, bathrooms, the shared kitchen, and then four bedrooms. Each had a key to your own bedroom, that was your own private space, but everybody shared them. And, especially in college towns, it was a very expensive way to make it through. So anyways, my question is, um, so this is.
What's your question, Dan? I can't hear you.
That, that it was, it's a new thing that.
Yeah, that, that is an addition, but at the same time, it's making it explicit in our code, I think that's not something we would. There could be one essentially in the city that's already operating in that, in that way, and not something that we would be. Regulating, eh, because it would ultimately be sort of likely going to look like a single unit house, maybe a larger house, but. In terms that internally you have those separate locks and shared space, uh, it's kind of like a, a roommate situation.
But more intentionally, it's just like, I think of a, like a recovery house, I'm saying, or like they have, uh. Adults with special needs or something like that, right, you're simply talking about that. And so, I was just curious that that wasn't, that was more of a commercial.
No.
As I said, it's RG and RS, right, and so before this, you allow it.
The recovery.
Oh, like, so, the.
Uh, eh, I mean, eh, explicitly it wasn't listed in the code, but I, I think it could happen, yeah. I was just, yeah, that's a good question.
You see those a lot more in college, I have a, um, a client who. When he went to college, he had gone fishing in Alaska the year before and they had a huge row bonus. And he was smart and he went out to Piravalos and bought five houses. Slept on the kitchen table and one of them rented all the rooms out, and he paid for them within four years.
Yep.
Wow.
Yeah, um, my son Nathan's living in one of the, in one of those situations down in Southern California now, he, he rents a room on a lease. Space.
And I think going forward, the younger people that are house-buying age now. They're showing people can't buy houses unless their families give them a huge chunk of money, or they go in with. Siblings or they go in with friends, and I'm reading more and more stories about how different people are coming together and buying houses together. And doing that very thing, because the single-family homes for, for younger people are impossible to get into now, so I think the. The times are changing and we'll see more of it.
That's, I, so staying in, within the general housing updates, um, so the. Something we want to make clear in both RS and RG zone is ADA ramps in the front yard setback areas, or standard front yard setbacks, the fifteen feet. But oftentimes there's a, a need for a ramp, um, to be added, and that this is making it clear that that could be within the, the setback. Um, area, this is something that we have allowed in the past, but it's not, this is like clear in the codes, um. Uh, that, that, that's an allowed a- addition, um. On the next one, so we removed, so we had these objective design standards in the RS zone that are still actually there. Around, just to make examples would be window shutters, pillars, window trim, and you're supposed to have three of these, it's really difficult to. Track and regulate kind of in terms of when you're signing off on the, the permits, and ultimately. Almost all houses have more than three of these anyway, I actually believe, I think gutters are listed as one of them, and you have gutters on the house, so just removing those from. From the, the co- the zoning code, um. It's the built-in kind of related, we're removing, um, energy efficiency standards, because those are actually captured already in the building code, so that we're double. Double dipping with our, our standards, so there's no need to have that within the zoning code, um, as well. Um, a- and then a new addition, and this is actually new for, for planning commission members as well, um, we met with. Department of Land Conservation Development staff, and they, um, basically with. And this is, eh, this is a little convoluted and complex, but you have to have, um. Eh, basically a clear path for a standard, and then you can have the discretionary path that has more detailed standards. So in our commercial zone right now, we allow multi-unit, resident, residential units as a conditional use, but there's no. Clear path in the, um, allowed use right now that's residential, because it is. It, it, it is predominantly a commercial zone, it's that there is the option for commercial sometimes, but this is actually adding. Um, the replacement of multi-unit dwellings in the commercial zone, so it's making it clear that if. They, there was a fire or something happened, and there was a, say, a, a quadplex. In the commercial zone, this would explicitly allow that to be rebuilt with no additional, not having to go back through that conditional use process. Um, so it's, it, it's a way for us to get in compliance with the, this, what the state was asking in the meeting, and also it's supporting. Housing, um, if, if something, um, terrible happened, of a fire or something else.
So I have a question then, um, and that, this isn't about that, but say we have a house in a light industrial zone, your house burns down. As the code is now, we can't get a conditional use to put it back up, can we?
So, so you would be a non, non-conforming, um, and, uh. Eh, yeah, if it's completely torn down, I think the only option that the code would be a, a variance.
Okay.
Application within, within a year, um. And I'm just double checking, I don't tell you the wrong thing off the top of my head.
So is that a, I'm sorry, is that a yes?
He's looking.
It's, oh, okay.
It's a, I don't know yet.
It's actually a yes. And there's certain variances, you can go for different timelines.
Okay.
I think the first one's what you do, and then there's you, you're gonna add different timelines with the variance.
And, and actually the, the current, uh, language right now is. A variance to rebuild a destroyed non-conforming structure, and it allows the rebuilding of a partially. Damaged non-conforming structure as long as it's not made to be more non-conforming, so I think something that's. In that language right now is the partially, um, damaged aspects, but it includes rebuilding of a totally destroyed. Um, non-conforming structure, um.
And if you repair it, I think you have to stay in the same footprint, you.
Mm-hmm, if it was, yeah, partially damaged, it would stay in the same.
So it's a maybe, not a no, John.
This is like really a good.
You're right, if it's completely destroyed, you can't, yeah.
And there's, and we can go to details, I'm applying to in terms of there's a rezone option potentially, a rezone to residential, so then you would be conforming, um. Um, is, you know, eh, and, and I believe you're adjacent to some residential as well, so you're not creating an. Kind of an island or a leapfrog zone.
I don't know.
Into the, to the north, eh, to the north, do you have residential?
North is RG.
But don't we have more? Then it's that pastor, the upper pastor, is that RG?
Yeah, it's all, well, it's all light industrial, a bit of it near.
Oh.
Yeah, still there's enough.
All right, okay.
We didn't touch on that part.
Yeah, I'm not worried about it, I don't plan on driving my house down, so.
Well, that's good.
Yeah.
Thanks, yeah.
Now, just. One stick's down your number.
No, it sounds like too much work.
Anyways, and then kind of moving forward, reduced, um. Setbacks in the commercial zones, so just a slight, slight reduction in setbacks standards, um, and then kind of what. Uh, we had the public comment on was this commercial residential overlay, so the next slide, Berlin, you. Probably from here you can't read the streets, but it, the U is, that's on the map, that's Business Highway twenty, and then. Um, you know, it's creating a boundary and that's Beach Street there, so as currently proposed, this. This area of town currently has a lot of existing, um, residential that's within a commercial zone, so it would be on. All legal, non-conforming, but then you run into the issue of if your house is burned down, eh, eh, you can't rebuild it, so the, kind of. Unless you, the variance, and you're kind of going through that process, I outlined a little bit, but creates some challenges when property owners are trying to sell within this area. Um, so that ultimately the original goal of creating this, this overlay is. You know, maybe back in this, when the zoning was created, there was a vision that this area might turn into more of a commercial. Area in flavor, and that's kind of the purpose of that legal non-conforming is that. You slowly might move towards what the zone is in the area, so there might have been a vision that that was more of. An area for another kind of, uh, strip mall, more commercial essentially in that.
Well, it's because Business twenty used to be Highway twenty, so everybody came through town.
No, that, that's a good.
Yeah, so I would imagine it would be invested, try to change that zoning back to residential. Because we need more residential than we need businesses, I, I don't know.
And this would actually create, in, eh, in the way we did it as an overlay, so you keep.
You can do either.
The commercial, so you can now do new, do either, and to John's point right now, how it's structured, it would allow any. Type of residential, so that includes, um, a single unit, it wa- eh, up to, up to apartments.
Yeah.
And part of the reasoning behind it was that there are existing single units there to make it, so we no longer ran into that non-conforming. Issue for a future, but it does allow it, there was, there is a little bit of vacant area within this overlay. Where someone potentially could just build a new single unit in there, if that's what they.
Single unit, but no multi-unit?
But, eh, or a multi-unit, um, it, it's very flexible in terms of the zone.
So I have a question, to the point of the whole fire burning down and not being able to rebuild, isn't that? Kind of puts us in jeopardy for Prop sixty-six, if we're telling somebody they can't rebuild a new property.
Um.
That puts a non-conforming use to the zoning code.
That's why you check property lines and everything else before you buy property, you do research, a title search, and if you don't, then it's too bad.
Now, to my knowledge, our property has never been great, used for anything else other than a residence on it. Um, and there's another house next to it. Um, situation, so I would doubt it be, I don't think it would be very hard to get a variance or something, or, or a change, but yeah, it's, it's because of. It's, it's not so residential.
Okay, I was just concerned that if it was, if we tell people they can't rebuild, it runs us into the proposition fifty-six.
It all depends on their zoning.
Yeah.
I, I'm a little bit lost, actually a lot lost, so when I, when I look at this, this graphic here. Are we looking at changing it so that it can all be either or, or?
Actually, I believe we just changed it. We, is that not, not the stuff there by, uh, you know, Chamber Commerce and stuff?
Yeah, it's, it's.
We just changed that.
It's not officially adopted, yeah.
But we've been working on it to change it, so they can build like duplexes, right?
Okay, so there's nothing required of us, this is just sort of like a heads up.
It's, yeah, well, this was, this.
Us talking about it.
Yeah, it wa- it was where it's just, I could build like a single house and stuff, we change where it's gonna be. More and more residences in there, so instead of like a single little, uh. It's, so, yeah, that's been in the works, we've been trying to make it where they can get more units out of ones, uh, for like six months.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so, it did work, yeah.
Okay.
And then, I, I wanted to open it up to, to the, because, uh, we received a visitor comment on, on this area about not wanting. About not wanting um a single unit to be a part of the overlay. So that's ultimately, this is a. Uh, uh, we can't decide now, but we can have a discussion on it, what this overlay looks like. This is this is us creating an overlay, if we call it the commercial residential overlay, but trying to be more inclusive. To allow additional housing, but it it can be restructured as well. This is kind of what Planning Commission originally came up with in terms of the options.
So are we limiting, are we currently eliminating the overlay to the um black outline?
Yeah, right, currently, right now, it would be everything within the the black outline. We kind of the reason to the, if you go to the west, you have the main street overlay, and to the east, some of those lots are still. A little bit more commercial in flavor.
I I just wanted to make sure I was reading it correctly, because I think there are a lot of other. Um, places along Business Loop Twenty that would benefit from an overlay like this. Um, because one of the issues that that we ran into with the dark holiday site. Is that it's it's listed as commercial, but it's been a residential. Since dark out, that's the building, the blue building down here on the corner, um as you come into town.
Okay.
Yeah, it used to be a cabinet maker's place, and then it got turned into apartments, and then we'll we'll just say that.
You're talking about, there's a cabinet shop. That's where McGuire bearing. That's right on the corner. Corner before you just go down to Bolinelli, last corner before you head down to Bolinelli, that like apartment thing on the right.
Oh.
They made they made all the bearings for Steve Johnson.
Okay, I've always thought maybe it was part of the old dairy or something.
No, the chicken dairies. Any kind of bearing you make it, they would actually make it for you.
He's an important too.
Always milked.
I'm actually a hundred percent negative, everybody's an important. Keep us on track.
Yeah, they were listed on that.
And. And a side comment to.
Justin's trying to continue this meeting.
Thank you.
For and then for, it's ideal with the, just because there's people listening to to. Limit um side conversations, Lisa's let us know that kind of for the audio later, it's hard to listen in if we're having the the side conversations. And I know it's hard to stay on track all the time, but just a note in terms of trying to trying to stay on on track and um. And to answer, we'll go to you, John, in a second, to answer your question, Eric Cross. We tried to create a contiguous boundary, um I think there could be. It it this zone actually could be expanded, um but we did say if they are abutting. Um, that language could could change to where it it could be not abutting. And then somebody later on could request to join into the overlay, so that's something that could potentially be. Be changed as the abutting language, um and then it could be marked inclusive to other lots, or someone could ask to join later. Um, and one one benefit of the Toledo code is the. Com- the conditional use option for residential, so any lot that's owned. Commercial could go through the conditional use, but it is the extra planning commission process, whereas everybody within this boundary, if it is adopted.
It's just outright.
You it's outright permitted, and so it's a little bit fast. You don't have to wait a couple of months to get planning commission.
I had something on my mind, yeah, this doesn't, uh, there was a. I don't know where it slipped my mind, or I didn't even know what was happening, that uh, I'm kind of confused, I was out of town for a while. Um, but I come through town and I noticed there. Bunch of gravel and stuff filled in that lot across from uh Old Gas for Less and stuff. Um, I don't, I I, you know, I'm, I know. I know I can't fill in a swamp. When I was a kid, I had a boat parked back in there, and I trapped muskrats and new tree and beaver, and it was actually like ten, twelve feet deep. I had a boat stashed there, I trapped it all the time in winter, and now I see it's all filled in. And that was major wetlands, and now all of a sudden, it's not. How how and who managed to do that? I would like to know their secret.
Yeah, and maybe if I could take, I I don't know which lot specifically you're.
But you can't miss it.
I know what he's talking about.
You can't miss it, um there there is some somebody. I'd like to know their secret.
Is that the tip property?
Cause I'm.
On the tip property, and that's that's what makes it an interesting situation, Dennis, okay? Because, so you know where we blew the levee out across from East Slope Park?
Yeah.
Okay, that entire area that we cleared was so that we could fill in the entirety of the tip. If people wanted to.
Yeah.
Okay, with your property, okay? Um, and that parcel that you've seen.
Yeah.
Filled in is part of that, so as long as you did that before December first of last year. You could do that fill then without any, because it's your property, you just need to get a fill permit and you can do it. Because it's a mitigation for all that wetland that was already done by the city way out there.
Sounds the same things are tight gates, same exact thing.
Right, it's, but the difference is, is that. For us to be able to do anything on that tip property, we had to get that mitigation site. Out there, because otherwise we couldn't fill one spade full of anything in here, the state wouldn't let us do it. So the only way we could do it was to take and buy that land over there across from East Slope. Take the dike out and let it just become a wetland launch.
Kind of traded that off. I have a bunch of swamp land between high school and Dixon Drive and all that.
Right.
Okay, now, see that, I used to hate that, I used to milk there all the time, but in Project Two Thousand. With Tali, with G P, Project Two Thousand, we call what they call is a bathtub where the freshwater meets the salt water. And that's where the salmon comes through, you know, they fish wildlife raised it six inches. Six inches to here is billions of gallons of water.
Right, right.
And it was done without everybody's knowledge, and you know, nobody complained about it.
Yeah.
And now that's why that's all flooded all the time back here. You go to like Old Piner, oh, it's Piner Trail now, I got a house just right where the water comes up. That starts from my property all the way up to left there, between Tuffy Browns and that road there, that's mine. Anyways, uh, this, that floods now, salmon's always over top of it, it used to be maybe once every two years.
Not anymore.
Now it's, you know, I mean, uh, you can spit outside the road, out your truck and flooded. And that's six inches, I know, I was I was part, I was changing the pumps at the time, we would put bigger pumps in. So we pump it up to the ball field, you know, that's all, that's what storage is there, but anyways, uh. I I wouldn't be able to use that land, but I can't now because same thing, and then I I go by there and I see, I see that, and I'm like.
Well, but makes you feel any better.
I don't even know how.
To do that mitigation and buy that piece of property from the steam cokes.
Uh huh.
We also had to buy, to get the steam coke to let us buy that, we had to buy what's known as the freshwater side, which is that.
Right.
All the way from the impoundment, all the way up to the corner on East Slope.
Mm hmm.
Okay. Well, what we thought we were gonna do back in the early two thousands is we were gonna take that.
It's eighteen acres.
Yeah. And turn that into an expanded memorial field, right, or three or four ball fields, a pavilion, a place for, you know, summer festival to expand. D S L and D Q said, you're not, you're not removing a a shovel full of dirt, you're not adding a shovel full of dirt. And now you have your own wetland you can look at all day long.
Is this something to do with the bridge to nowhere?
Yes, yeah, that was part of the, we found a way around the bridge to nowhere by using the dike. But the bridge to nowhere was bought, what it had bought, it was a buy. Nowhere was bought because that was part of the plan that we were trying to do. Was then be able to have the park, do the bridge over to the school, blah, blah, blah. Well, and then D Q and D S L told us, no, you can't do anything in there, just like.
I'd darn near run into the coffee shop when I see them putting all that gravel in there, I saw. Yeah, I I mean, I had a boat in there.
Oh, I have no doubt.
Feet deep, and I'm like trying to figure out how somebody got away with that. What I can't even.
That's how it happens.
I could, yeah, I, you know, I mean.
Because the land had already been mitigated, so the filling was allowed, was allowed.
I mean, all this sneaky stuff goes by and nobody knows about it, and then like with the D, with the O D F W N G P. With the Project Two Thousand went on and, you know, uh, now that's, this you have that, you can't touch it. And all these people lost all that land.
Yeah.
To wetlands now, and.
Oh, I understand.
I lost, there's a lot of acreage that, well, it's actually my daughter's and.
But that's what happened with that. But you had to have it done before December first of this of last year.
Yes, um, no, I I I'm not, I'm not trying to be off track, but it's part of what we're talking about here. But as I like to develop land, and uh, there's only, you know, only places you can develop land in Toledo is a swamp. And that's why you got the trader park, you can't have another trader park in Toledo, because it's not confined, it's everything's confined down in this. The little flat swamp area, and then I get to see these, somebody building gravel out here. And I think I'm putting our storage units out there, or why didn't they make that into a place where. Housing or uh R V park or something, you know, I mean, uh, you you know, just like uh something out by Little Pugsford Mill. Put a development out there. Why couldn't, why couldn't that been used for something like that? That would have really helped us in housing problem, what is going to be out there?
Well, and part of what we're dealing with at the at the city council level is what's known as the FEMA Buy Up. And FEMA Pick'em, P I C M. And let's just say that if their rules go into effect in the state.
Right, it's all gone, yeah.
Oh, it's not just all gone.
Yeah.
Dennis, this is how dumb it is, you know where my house is.
Yeah, we'll be all in New Orleans, so.
No, no, you know where my house is?
Yeah.
The bottom section of my land, which is still on the hillside.
Mm hmm.
Could never be developed.
Yeah.
Because it's within that hundred and seventy feet of the high watermark of A Street.
Yeah.
That's, that's how I'm nuts in it.
Right, yeah, I know.
There there's no foot and curb surface.
Right.
Having roads.
Somebody had too much education, is what that. So, but the fact is, though.
You're saving room.
What is gonna go there? Now, what is gonna go there where the gravel is?
I don't know, they haven't put in a building permit to.
Well, they.
Right now, it's parking lot.
Well, yeah, uh.
Well, there's a, you know, in there, if it's the property, I'm saying.
And we know, we do know, we all know.
Behind Rutherford's?
We all know this, that somebody can put whatever they want on the application, but we don't have no boots on the ground to check what it is, so. So we know they all lie on application.
You're talking about where it's behind Rutherford's?
They can put anything they want on the application.
There's no loops on the ground.
Still gas station.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I want to get us back to the.
All right.
Back to the code updates, um, and then we, there's time to at the end for councillor and commissioner comments as well. And then we can, if we don't get to it there, we can.
Well, I was, I was just feeding off of what, you know, we're talking about.
John's hands got me tired there.
And and John, I want to go go to you again.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, terrific, yeah, I wanted to clarify, since we're talking about this particular issue, which is the one that I brought up earlier, I wanted to clarify. Uh, some of my earlier comments after hearing the discussion. So in twenty nineteen, when I bought that property on Beach Street that's owned commercial, it's actually like a flag lot, if you're familiar with it. That lot was like twelve thousand square feet, so kind of my comment here is that if this. This overlay had been in place in twenty nineteen, that lot would not have been available to buy and put a fourplex or middle housing on. Because somebody would have bought it and put a single family on it, or a manufactured home, some some other type of a thing. And it wouldn't have been available, and and so that's part of my my comment about this is that when you do this. You're taking some of these lands that through the conditional use permit with the commercial. Allows for this middle housing, three units, four units, six units, all of that is allowed. The minute you do this, then the 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 low hanging fruit would be, oh, just put a a a single family on it. But the problem is, you have these other zones, the general residential zone, and you have property available. That people can buy to put a single family manufactured a home on that will not allow a triplex, fourplex, sixplex on it. So you're really limiting where this middle housing can go by doing this. If 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 I'm trying to clarify, if that makes sense.
I think that's the point, is we're trying to make it easier for. So what if, what if we were to make that, make a condition within this about the, and it has to be on the lot size? Right, if if you've got X size of a lot, you you need to build, you need to go, you know, you need to build multi. But if it's this size, and if it's only a certain size, then you can only have. Uh, because these lots, I mean, I'm looking at these lots and they are all over the map in sizes.
I don't like restricting what people can build on their.
I know, I I understand what you're saying.
I think looking ahead, we should think about as a city incentivizing. People purchasing lots in areas where they can build multi. Family, whatever we're calling it now, multi-units. And, you know, preference will be given to those people, or we do something to dangle a carrot to make it easier for. People to buy, uh, to build multi-people units. Um, in these areas as opposed to, you know, people building a single home that only.
I don't know how, I don't know how.
I don't know how we would do that, but maybe we can talk about it and look at it.
Isn't the reason for doing this? So if somebody that has a residential unit within this zone already. Is then able to rebuild if something happens to their house, isn't that the kind of the reasoning behind it?
It's more than that, okay, so Glenn McEnroe used to have, before this overlay was put in, right, if you remember Glenn's place? No bank would loan on it because it was a how, it was a nonconforming use within the commercial zone.
And I think the green one to to the left of that is also, the other thing that people need to consider is parking.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, you know, if you start putting in multi-unit, then are, then you don't want to tell people what they can build on their property. Are you going to be able to start telling people how many cars they can park on their property?
No, but I don't think there's anything wrong with putting, saying if you have, you know, you have to have so many, you know, per unit, you have to have so much parking spot.
But yeah, and that's a problem, that's what I'm saying, applying that is can be can be problematic. Depending on the neighborhood, the width of the street. There's so many variables, there's so many. Yeah, we live in cities, they are very specific, like if somebody comes to you for a permit and says, I want to build. A grocery store, and then the planning commission looks at it and says, okay, for this size grocery store, you need thirty-six parking places. And their land only can accommodate twenty, they will not give them the permit.
Okay.
Because people will always do the wrong thing, if you do not, if you do not keep an eye on what they're doing, they will always. People are feral.
You also have to plan for growth too, you don't want to make your policies based on kind of what your current circumstances are, we're a city that needs. To generate some avenue, we need to get more people here, we need to create housing to get the people here.
Mm hmm.
Uh, so I think we have to figure out when, you know, John's got a place that he's. Opening up right across the street from the police station there, that's a road that we don't want to see, you know, twenty units worth of. Um, units being put in without some sort of accommodations for parking, that's our library, that's head start. And it's right in front of the police station, the park and ride and stuff like that, and yeah.
Thank you.
I think, um, based on the comments that can look at it and think of if there is a a creative way to, it it would essentially be a density standard, that would.
Yeah.
Be some sort of density standard, so we can kind of think about this offline and present. Something at the public hearings to see which option, it would start with planning commission and then city council, what which option they want to to go with moving. Moving forward, but I think there there's a possible path, path forward here based on.
Thank you, Justin. Thanks again, John.
Hey, I want to thank you, can you still hear me?
Yep.
Yeah, this work that Justin has done and Arlene and the planning commission, I mean, I just can't commend all of you enough. Because I think what you're doing is so progressive, it's so forward thinking, it's so proactive to try to. You know, entice housing and do housing, and and I don't think, maybe you, maybe you take it for granted, but a lot of these. And, and I don't think, maybe you, maybe you take it for granted, but a lot of these things that Justin has brought you and everything, they come out of, you know, other, other, uh, things that come from the state that they're forcing on every community over, say, ten thousand or twenty-five thousand residents. And you guys have like thirty-eight hundred people and you are progressive because you are pulling all these things in to say, hey, let's open this up. Let's do middle housing. Let's do ADUs. Let's do all this stuff. And so it's very welcoming. And I just wanna commend you and just say thank you. This is great. It's all good. And I appreciate being part of that conversation. Thank you.
I think, thank you, John. You can go to the next slide, Arlene. So kind of wrapping up the, uh, general housing code updates. Um, so I know we were just talking about parking, but amended duplex parking standard to one per unit. So currently it's one point five per unit. So you'd see three.
Can only have a half car.
The math, the math here does work out. Yeah.
Only two of your car, that's like a smart car.
And the ma, the math works out, or it should just say three, but yeah, one point five per duplex and three, and now it would go down to, to two. Um, and this is in compliance with state law. And just to be clear with this, this doesn't prevent someone from providing more parking. It's just the, the minimum.
Minimum.
Yeah. Um, and then kind of similar, the proposal in the current, um, code. Um, kind of one of the recommendations we got from DLCD was a reduction on the multi-unit parking. What's currently proposed in the code is a minor reduction, and you'll see it's actually going down. Now, it was either point two five or point five, or, and it's based on bedrooms. So studios require less than a three bedroom. Currently how it's structured, but just minor, really minor reductions in that required parking. And then again, the point fives come in, but you ultimately you end up rounding up is how the code, code works. Um, but, uh, and again, someone could provide more, more parking, but there was still, there's still a parking requirement for, for multi, uh, you know, you know, housing that would be required. Um, and then, and, and another proposed update is around our conditional use standard. So changing that from one year to two years for the approval timeline. Um, and then you could still have the one, one year, um, renewal. So that would actually give you a total of three, three years potentially with conditional use. What we found is it takes, it takes time to develop. Um, ultimately someone can, can have a conditional use. And if they broke in ground and submitted their building permit, um, it, that, that activates their use. So it could be finished after that deadline. But this is additional timelines because based on what we've seen, it, almost every single time with the conditional use, somebody has to get their one year and then they have to come back for their renewal. So the goal is that you have two years on the front end and then you can come in for the additional year. And this, um, currently how it's proposed, this would also apply for current conditional uses that are approved, where someone could apply for an additional renewal up to the three-year total. Uh, so if there's an active conditional use out there, they could come in and apply to get one additional um, year to the, to the planning commission that could make that, that application. Um, really minor update here is our DLCD notice, just make. Uh, sorry, Department of Land Conservation Development, the State Land Use Agency. No, thank you. I get into the acronyms. Um, uh, reducing that to thirty-five days from, from forty-five days to match state law. Um, and then, um, and actually this, um, now that we're kind of talking through this, this amending the non-conforming chapter and, um, adding, um, sorry, adding a housing exception for the, for housing rebuilt within two years. So this is actually answering your question, uh, concern makes, um, in terms of for non-conforming uses. This is actually for specifically only housing with all the housing constraints within the community. Um, that, that you would have two years to, to rebuild, um, for that, those non-conforming uses. And that's, that would be in addition to our non-conforming, um, chapter. That, this wouldn't apply to, say, there was a commercial use that was uh, non-conforming, that, 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 that additional two years doesn't apply to that. It's very specific to, to housing related uses. With the new code of face, yeah. Um, so any questions here?
I've been seeing the, the parking being reduced requirements. And I, I know we're trying to meet, you know, just be with state law. But we have such parking problems in different parts of our town and reducing it makes it easier on us, but in the long run, we're gonna end up with more, more cars parked on the street, more school buses in dangerous situations, dropping kids off, um, harder for emergency vehicles to get through. I mean, these are the things that I hear about all the time. And, um, I, I don't like it, but I'm just throwing that out there. So it's on record. I don't like it. I think we should keep whatever we have now and not reduce it, but that's just me.
I think the thought is that, you know, there's like Uber and stuff like that. People don't necessarily have cars, you know, younger generations. Or maybe there's, you know, multiple people, they only have one car type thing. They're so expensive.
Or a half a car.
Right.
And in, in recognition to, to your comment, I think, um, that's why we, the proposal, and the, the duplexes, it's, that's tied to state law. The, the multi-unit, that's not specifically tied to state law. And the proposal is really minor going down by the point two five. So I pulled up the actual code in, in there, but um, so one bedroom would go from a one point five per unit to a one point two five per, per unit. So really trying to recognize that Toledo is a smaller community, but also kind of the balance of, uh, potentially like sometimes if someone can't fit in that one last space now they can't build. So trying to find that, that balance. We didn't wanna do major, like there's no, you can build anything and you don't have to have live parking, but trying to do minor, but I recognize those.
Our spot and a bike rack.
Yeah, and.
Per unit.
And, and it, it is a little weird and funky by the one point two five, but it's that you'll be building at least like three units. And then we have to, we do have to round up.
See, put one more parking spot in there.
So if it was, say, three units, that's three point seven five, but we have to actually go.
That's where the bike rack goes, isn't that fourth spot?
It's always, it's always rounding up, never rounding down.
Oh, is there a millimeter for the width of the parking spot? Because the ones out here are really narrow.
Yeah, so we would e- evaluate that when you, you could have some contact with spaces, but we would, um, look at, um. And actually, I don't think technically we have anything in our code that defines the parking space, but we rely on uh, our kind of public works to take a look at, at parking lots, um, as well.
She's drunk.
I'm gonna keep going because I know. Uh, okay, so House Bill three three nine five updates. I can make these pretty quick. So there's, uh, and we were ahead of the, the state here, um, the, now cities between twenty-five hundred and ten thousand residents have to allow duplexes on any lot that allows a single, should say, unit detached or single family. Um, so basically any lot that allows that single unit, you can also build a, a, a duplex. And that's, we already meet, this is already our current code, so there's no proposed change here. Um, and then, uh, so here, this is, so in, and this is kind of, there's a long conversation with planning commission around this standard. But in areas within the urban growth boundary, um, and zone for commercial use directs local governments to allow housing units available to those households making sixty percent of area median income or allow mixed-use structures within the ground floor, um, for those households with moderate incomes. So this standard, we don't, what we learned is we don't have to directly adopt this into our code. And we learned that there might be tweaks in the current legislative session for this. So we're not, the proposal is not to adopt this into our code directly, but refer to the ORS when we need to. And likely when this is occurring, we'd be working, city would be working with a nonprofit that would be looking at building under the specific exception that's in state, state law. So because of the changes, what the recommendation was, is that we wouldn't adopt this into our current code and the proposed tweaks. Um, and it sounded like it was more so that this would be most likely in larger cities and wouldn't be something that was in Toledo, but it could, it's state law in the statute. So it could be something that's applied. So it's easier to have it out of the code, our code, the city's code. Um, and you can go to the next slide. Um, here, and this, sorry, this is smaller, um, but the, yeah, this came out a lot smaller than I thought. But basically that first bullet, just to summarize, it's just clarif, it's, it's clarifying what they call a hundred and twenty day rule with our code. So we have to process applications within a hundred and twenty days. So that, without reading that entire paragraph, it, it's, um, clarifying that hundred and twenty day rule to meet state, state law. Um, and then the next one, also not to read the whole bullet as well. This is related to condo law. Basically, we, the city, cities can't have additional processes to prevent condominiums. It's just you have to go through the state process. We don't have that. We, Toledo already meets that. Um, code update. And the reason we're listing these is specifically our funding is tied to House Bill three three nine five. So we need to make sure that we were in compliance with the, the rules. Um, and then the last one we touched on was the single room occupancy unit. So we're adding that into the, the code. And sorry for this small text on this, this slide that came out. Smaller. Um, and then you can go to the next slide, Arlene. And so next, we'll talk about our partition and subdivisions. Um, so partitions, think about dividing one lot into two or three lots, and then subdivisions is anything more than that. Um, so four or more lots. We, we could take a break if you want. Uh, this will also, I could probably get through this in under five minutes. Yeah. Hopefully. And then, so, um, minor definitions, we had a new definition around net, net buildable acre. So that, that new definition, um, it, it makes it clear that we're excluding out floodplain areas or steep slope areas. So that's that net buildable, the actual area that's likely to be built. So.
Percentage or the falling steep slope now?
Um, I think in our code, we, we did twenty, twenty-five percent, which matches our geo, geotech standard. Um, and then I think one, one solution here for what we run into is so joint use driveways. Um, and I would, and if I need to, I can draw it on the, uh, board, but think, so a lot of the time there's these weird flag lots. So think of a skinny pole and then like a flag. And that, that's what, and then you end up with three flags right next to each other and it ends up being a really wonky development. And then the purpose of the joint use driveway standard is that you can have three lots. So the front lot would be facing whatever the street is. And then you have two lots behind and you'd have a shared driveway. So you're creating only one driveway instead of three driveways right next to each other. So the whole purpose of that is to create more efficient development of, of lots. And there's specific standards around fire, um, public, public works surface review, um, that an eat, uh, it would have to record a shared use agreement as well in terms of maintenance of that. Long term, it would be the, those property owners maintaining it at the city. So it's a way to get away from these flag lots. Um, flag lots would still be allowed, but this is a, a, a more efficient way in certain instances of developing lots. Um, we're defining density in the RS zone. Um, right now our code is like two pages long describing the density standard. So this makes it clear that in the RS zone, you'd have to have four lots per net buildable acre. So that's really clear that it's your, or it, that you're already removing those floodplain areas or sloped areas. And in the RG zone slightly more in terms of four point lot, five lots per acre. So if someone came in and was building a two-acre subdivision in the RS zone, they would need to at least have eight lots that were, were built. So it's having, these aren't in, um, they're, they are density standards, but they're like, based on our calculations, these could easily be met by a, a developer in terms of being able to, to meet, meet those acreage standards. Um, and then really quick, just, uh, kind of just updating some lot standards to make them more clear. Um, double frontage lots are basically lots where you have frontage on two separate streets. So it's typically that's not something, it's ideal where you're fronting, uh, say, fourth and fifth street on one lot. So it's long and skinny. Or you could potentially have had two lots there. Um, and then adding public improvement procedures for the inspection process for when a subdivision does, does happen. So we have, we have a clear process for having public works go out and review to make sure the water, the sewer, the roads are put in correctly with the subdivision. You could go to the next slide, Arlene. And then one, partitions, the proposal is to update this to a type two staff level approval. So these are the smaller lot divisions. Um, and oftentimes they're kind of a check the box with planning commission. We meet the standards and we move forward. So the proposal is to change that to staff level instead of a planning commission review subdivision. Then I wanna talk to Mike a little bit more about this. We received some kind of question from DLCD's Department of Land Conservation, uh, and saying that our subdivision actually should be a type two process. We still think that it, in terms of it makes sense in Toledo to have those as a type three planning commission hearing for review. So this is something that we are looking into a little bit more in terms of this, the subdivision standards, whether if we have to do it as a type two because of state law will do that. But the type three is something where it's a smaller community, larger division, it probably should go to the planning commission for, for review. So we're, we're looking into that a little bit more. Um, by, by, by standards, this was a minor update, uh, uh, to just allow the discretionary pathway. So a shared shoulders or multi-use pass. So it's giving, basically, I guess to summarize this easier is, is giving more options for someone if they needed to meet, meet the bikeway standard. Um, and then kind of where we ran into some questions when DLCD staff reviewed our code, um, was kind of having the, the clear example of we avoid natural hazards is the kind of, that's your discretionary path. And then your your objective path is if you, uh, if you can't avoid them, you demonstrate that adequate precautions are taken. So basically if, if it's really steep slopes, you try to avoid them. If you can't, then you get a geotech to confirm that you're, um, uh, making those adequate, um, changes. You have an engineer out there looking at it. Um, the last one is basically giving more time, similar to that conditional use, but giving more time to get preliminary plat approval because surveyors are limited. So it's giving, giving more time is the main point of that last, last bullet. Uh, then you can go to the next slide. We added a little bit of language around traffic impact analysis. So if there's a larger subdivision that came in, that's something that public works could, could require and look at. Um, and then some language around future street connections. So making it clear, like if one development occurred, they're often called stubborn streets, but basically it's allowing that street to continue into a future development. So that's making sure that you have continuous efficient development. Um, and then expedited land divisions. So updating this to meet the ORS. And then there's this new term, missing middle subdivisions. Um, and, and actually in the case of Toledo, it's more so a miss, missing middle division of land. Um, so it's because we allow duplexes now outright, what it would allow you to do. So a duplex is on a single lot, you have to sell that um, together. It's a, a full lot. Potentially with the missing division, someone could divide that and ha, now have two, they call them child lots and sell those individually as long as you're meeting, um, building code. Um, and then you'd end up having the separate, um, sewer water connections and everything. So it's, this is meeting state law. I don't know if we would actually see a lot of these in Toledo, but it's giving that option to where someone could divide a duplex and then individually sell those rather than live in one and then rent one or rent both. It just, ultimately it provides an additional option. I wouldn't foresee us seeing a lot of these. We've actually never seen an expedited land division. I've been here since Arlene's been here. So I don't know if that will ever apply, essentially. Um, and then, and then updating minor replats to a type two procedure. So replat is basically you have an existing subdivision or, um, land. You have an existing subdivision or, um, land division and you need to, um, tweak some of where the lines, the lines are. So you're replating it. So that would be rather than especially minor ones where you're not changing the number of lots that should just be a staff level approval. Um. Where you're changing more lots, that would become a major replat. And as long as. You check the state law piece, that, those right now would still go to planning commission. Sorry, you know, it took a little longer to get through, through all of these, but. Questions on the subject.
Well, not really necessarily on the updates, but I saw something, um, page nineteen, number three. And then it's also on page seventy-four, three dash C. Has to do with the FEMA biopsy. Um, number three says all driveways shall have an all-weather surfaces approved by public works. And then the other one, page seventy-four. Which we can't do that anymore because of FEMA. Uh, page seventy-four, three C. It says. Uh. Above shall be improved with either asphaltic or Portland cement concrete for the entire length of the private access easement. With the new stuff from FEMA, that can't be in there. If you can't do impervious surfaces, we can't change the floodplain or anything.
Yeah, for any, any kind of cement asphalt.
It either is existing already or they can't change it.
Well, this is for new, isn't it? But what I'm, I don't know. I just saw that and I know that that's.
Well, you'd have to have a study and you'd have to have this and you'd have to have that.
Sixty thousand dollars to build your house and, and figure out where are you going to mitigate everything and.
So somebody comes into town with actual money and wants to build a very nice house.
Remember that we discussed that. I, okay, I, I know, I know. Just hypothetically.
And they want to put in a paper driveway. Does that cover it?
Um, I think with the, I'll double check the language. Will we say, we say that that.
The blocks where you can grow grass in it so that it's still permeable. I, I'm just saying like you may need to expand your. Definition of a driveway.
And I'll double check. I think we tried to capture it in certain places by saying other surface approved by public works. So you're, we list, listing the standard. Ones that we normally see within. Being also flexible for those.
I'm not trying to be difficult. I just.
No, that's a good question.
Yes, is the other surface is still in there then?
I'll, I'll double check. I need to.
Yeah, it says with another service by public works and fire.
Okay.
So you still do gravel to approve.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
Because it's an all-weather.
What if I like to?
Well, the fish like to keep having kids wash your ribs.
I think the ones we got to do washing.
That's a good question. Thank you.
No, you're not using the car worse than me though. So.
In terms of, yeah, in terms of next steps, we're, we're hoping we'll send out the public notices here and have. Public hearings here in the next, in the coming months. So, um, that's the, and you'll. Seeing really a similar presentation that'll kind of, um. Yeah, uh, to what I provided, but try to get through it a little bit quicker. Um. And that, that's kind of where we're at in terms of moving, moving forward with, with these up, updates. And then the last item before we can, we can go to a counselor and commissioner comments, um.
Were we going to take a break?
No reason to now.
Oh, no, no, good.
Sorry.
No, we're fine. Keep going.
The, and the parks master plan is super, super quick update. Um, so there was a grant received, um, from the Oregon Parks and Rec Department. Um, and now kind of the next, the next step is, um, we have the, we have the grant agreement signed that council looked at a. A month or so ago now, um, and then kind of moving forward with getting someone on board. To work through that process and likely hopefully in the summer, kind of working, working through that, that grant, grant process. But that's kind of where we're at, that timeline. So I think we'll be one of the main, that we hopefully kind of tagging along with some existing events in the city. Um, would be the goal. And that'll be one of the main, main kind of projects and focus areas probably for the next. Um, year.
Please keep me in the loop. Uh, we still have those youth up at the high school that, uh, they were junior high kids a year ago. Now, some of them still are, but a couple of them are into high school, but they're still interested in helping with that.
I know, I like that.
So just let me know so I can keep them in touch and.
You have to see council.
They have different ideas for improvements for all the different parks around town.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I love when the kids get involved and feel invested in the community.
Yeah.
Some of them might actually stay.
And wait, and then maybe the other kids, you know, they'll have kids, no feeling. It was our idea to put this slide, you know.
Have to go with our random parents, heavy metals.
I didn't need any skin there. All right, Justin.
The last, the last thing is, I think, uh, city counselor and commissioner comments. Any, any comments? It doesn't.
You guys are doing a great job.
Thank you all, by any fashion numbers. This, we did similar to this back. Did, I printed you and I was on planning commission, but this is decent stuff. Thank you very much for all your work.
Yep.
Um, so have you been following? I can't remember the number of the bill, but. Senator Anderson has fulfilled for, for lagged, uh, timeline on the turnaround of permits. So like once the permit got put into the city and we accepted it and it got sent over to the county for all of its. Whatever, um, they only have forty-five days to essentially process it.
There's twenty days.
Uh, the, I guess they answer both, but the hundred and twenty day timelines are man use timeline. For, um, conditional uses, uh, applications. Bear, I'll just answer your question. I think you should just not followed it closely, but I've heard a little bit. So that's something I can.
What is, what is the current turn right?
Um, it varies. I mean, Arlene and.
A simple one should be two weeks. Major one could be two months.
Yeah, that, that, that's pretty.
Um, I was just curious because the way it's worded in there currently, it's that. It would be on us to make the county do it, but we make, but I've, what I've said in my comment was. But we can contract with the county for that service.
Yes, I should backtrack. That would just be the city's review. So that would just be zoning, fire, utilities, driveway. That would just be the local review, not.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Building code.
It's the whole thing. It's the building code review, our review, everything. And. I understand why he wants to do it because. From what I understand, there are many places around the state where it takes six, eight months to get the turnaround. Um, which affects everybody in that process. So. I just was wondering if you guys had heard about it and what, uh, what our current turnaround time is here from. The time they come in and submit a permit.
We, from our local side, we try to get comments back from. Uh, within two weeks of getting an application. And oftentimes there is. Clarification that we might need, whether.
I don't think they count that. I think it's from the time it's considered a, a complete application.
Yeah. And I would say it has, I think it has gotten better last year compared to previous years in terms of the, the processing timelines. But there are more complex ones that come through that can take still a lot longer.
Okay.
Getting reviewed.
I just want to make sure you're aware that that's out there. Hopefully there'll be some tweaks that will help a smaller jurisdiction to be able to handle the. Cause it sounds like it's got momentum on everybody's side. It's just a matter of getting the tweaks in there so that it's not one, you know. For lack of a better word, it's one size fits all means it only fits metro.
I, I can, I can look into that a little more. Last comments.
And I was too.
Okay. If nothing else, I guess we'll consider ourselves adjourned.